Okay, so, all right, Board, so we're, uh, we're live. Thank you very much. Let's have a quick word of prayer, even though, uh, we don't need to be quick about prayer. Uh, Father God, thank you for this day. Thank you for all these kind people that, uh, took time out of their day to come here again this week, uh, take care of the people's business, uh, protect them, guide them, and lead them, and help us tonight as we move forward with some projects that we need to take care of for Brandon. Uh, we would ask that, uh, you be with, uh, Wayne's family. Uh, for those of you that know Wayne, he keeps our books for the amphitheater, and his father passed away earlier today, and, uh, he'll be out this week taking care of family business, so please we'd be with him as he travels. Uh, Father God, we ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen. All right, Board, I need a motion here, I need, uh, I called you to order, MK's Pledge of Allegiance. I don't know why you put that on here, Angela. You did that out of means, I guess. So, as our regular meetings go, uh, we need to stand up and do the pledge of allegiance. Uh, where's my other agenda? The others are surprise. All right, okay. So, Board, like I was telling you Monday night, it feels like Fridays around here and Mondays all the time. Uh, as you look on what we're going, we've got seven topics here. I still don't have one and a half of them here that I was told it'd be here by five o'clock, but we'll work through those. All of these are important. Some of these are timely that we have to take care of this week. Others, uh, are just problematic things that pop in that, uh, we don't know about. So, uh, we all work as fast and as quickly as we can to get things on the agenda. Sometimes we miss things not. So, we want to talk about Collier Crossing and Rosewood. Let me go ahead and get Rosewood out of the way. Uh, we, uh, paid someone to come take the freon out of, uh, the central units down there, took care of that. Uh, we, uh, have secured the property. We had people show up last week to claim the washers and dryers in the wash area. I know of, uh, you know, told police to run them off. Uh, I don't know who was there to claim them, like they had ownership to them. Uh, we gotta navigate through these things. I know of no other owners or anything we need to deal with out there, Mark. Uh, well, all of a sudden they disappeared. They hadn't been back. They showed up with a trailer. Well, it just showed up out of the blue, and they were gonna get the washers done. I, I, but I, I didn't get any data from, you know, so PD went down there, and they aren't, they haven't come back. So, I'll keep you aware and keep our eyes and ears open. Not to my knowledge, there's a lock on the door. That building's secured, is what he said.
Uh, we finished popping those, uh, holly bushes around the buildings, trying to preserve those, and all the meters are gone. Electricity's been cut off, all the meters have been pulled. Uh, freon's been taken out, last thing we want to do, and Sam doesn't believe it's any there, but we do need to double check and make sure there's not any asbestos on the ground. So, we've got one quote for that. I thought we'd have the second one, uh, on the agenda tonight. When we get to that, Board, I'm asking for you to allow Mr. Baker and I to choose the lowest, uh, we've got two bids, I think forty-three and forty-eight hundred something is gonna come in, both below five thousand. I just want you to be aware that we are doing an asbestos check.
So, Board, if, you know, it's under five, we can issue a PO, and we'll do that. Just wanted you to know that's where we were. And here's the bridge man that showed up. All right, so, let's, uh, settle the dust here on Collier Crossing and have conversation about that. Uh, Kelly, I appreciate you being here. Uh, I know you've got some problems at our next board meeting, couldn't make that attend, so it worked out that these other things fell into play for you, our power there. Uh, you know, heard comments, I know in speaking with you and in speaking with other people, it seems like the, the city gets thrown under the bus a lot, like it's the city. And as I talked through this with you, some of this was covenants and making sure that wording was correct. It wasn't ready at the time. Another was, uh, Southern Pine, uh, had some problems there, and we're still having problems with them, so we're working through those, you know? And it's just, there's a lot going on in Brandon right now, and it's up to us to try to slow the machine down if we have to, to make sure the things are done in proper order. So, uh, just part of that. So, I've heard comments about, uh, building materials and vinyl siding and the covenants. Uh, to my knowledge, those are the key issues. There may be others. Uh, so, there you go. We want to talk about those and make sure, Sam, you might want to come up here so you can look at the board and they can hear you, and Mike's hot, or I'll step over here. Want to make sure everything is in order, and then answer any questions we got about covenants, building materials, access, sewer, uh, and those types of things to figure out how we can move forward. Sam?
What questions do you have?
I have a few, but...
That's all right, go ahead.
I have a few.
Go, go.
Well, it's like the mayor said, one, one was, um, the vinyl siding issue in there.
Okay.
Another was about fencing. Um, and you know, Kelly, we, on some of the other subdivisions, we've run into this, and I know, you know, I'm sure most of these are pretty cut and paste type things, but one thing that we've added into some of the covenants on some of the latest ones we've done is, you know, while the developer is the HOA, any, any changes to the covenants had to come back to the Board for approval. And I, I didn't see that in here.
So, the way it's issued in here is the Board of Directors for the eight, the homeowners' association that's appointed by and voted by the residents, the owners of any lot in the subdivision, they would make the determination on changes. But as far as square footages and things like that, um, if that's a concern, I don't see that being an issue. And in the covenants, as far as fencing, if you're referring to architectural controls, that's gonna be voted on, um, by the Architectural Review Committee, and that's pretty clearly illustrated in the covenants. And currently, we don't have any, we do have some loose controls on fencing, um, you know, we have height controls and, you know, friendly, you know, being a friendly neighbor, friendly side out, things like that. Um, as far as perimeter fencing, anywhere where there's an easement for the, for a declared easement that the HOA has to maintain, the HOA will be required to maintain that fencing, uh, things like that, um, which I know is an issue that we've run into with, uh, communities even just north of there, without not maintaining or really not being compliant with, um, the architectural controls, and then a lack of action on the HOA, and it, it comes back on like what he said, you know, that makes the city kind of, we get thrown under the bus for it.
So, I mean, like, when you, when you talk about the Architectural Review Committee, the, the proposal, the original proposal that had all of those things in it, that I've got a copy of, is that part of the minutes, covenants, whatever?
That's a part of the development review, so...
Yeah, I'm talking about the, the first thing that...
Yes, sir. That's, that is the development review application, not the official application, but that, that's the development synopsis that's submitted with the development review application, which I believe the Board voted on, on April fourth, uh, twenty-twenty-two. And that shows basically the architectural character of the community, uh, includes the square footages, which I understand, just going back to the minutes. We had comments about initially there being a minimum square footage of fourteen hundred. It's been raised to eighteen hundred, so now we've got a range with lot numbers saying this is, there's this amount at eighteen hundred, this amount at two thousand, and this amount at twenty-two hundred. And I don't know the exact number, I can't remember, but it's, you know, and the lots go from, I think eighty-two hundred square feet to thirteen hundred and thirteen thousand two, something like that. So, there's a pretty wide range there, which all meets, all meets our zoning ordinance for that TND there.
So, so like in, in this proposal, it has five-foot sidewalks in the covenants, it has four-foot sidewalks?
So...
With, like, the tree planting on the street?
Is that the, the third one? So, there was three, is that the third one? Are we sure that that's the third one?
I, I don't know.
So, there was three separate submittals, and I think that that was a compromise. And Kelly, correct me if I'm wrong, I think I'm wrong.
This one has thirty-one eighteen hundred square foot, twenty-nine, two thousand, and ten, twenty-two hundred.
So, that was on the, the last two development review submittals, so if that's, let me double check. Make sure quickly.
And, and it's not against Kelly, I'm just saying, we've had people propose things like this in the past, and we've approved it, and then there's nowhere in the covenants to back this up, I guess, and I don't know if that's because we have not followed through with it or, or what, but it never turns out the way that it was proposed.
I think that's a, a combination of the city and also the HOA, and, uh, not having a clear, open line of communication there, and that's something that I know that we've recently been working to, uh, sort of prevent, is working with, helping establish HOAs. We've done it in a couple here recently, and work with communities that do not have HOAs, um, help guide them through that process, and help them actually appoint an Architectural Review Committee. And I think we're actually kind of veering out of our lane, but we're just trying to work as good stewards of the community, you know, and just, really, I know in my department we do it, uh, myself and Randy have been a part of them. So, um, I know that we are making, we're making strides in the right direction to help HOAs be able to enforce and understand what really a preliminary, um, criteria would need to be met for the appointees of the ARC for an HOA, not just anyone is gonna be a part of an ARC. And, uh, I know I've helped with those meetings in the community just north of there, uh, 'cause they just couldn't seem to get off the ground. But that's something I could definitely clear up as far as, uh, the sidewalk width, for sure.
No, I think what Alderman Vincent's saying is, is that, and correct me if I'm wrong, it doesn't say five-foot sidewalks in here, and it does say with regard to houses, it's in here, but the concern is, is that although there is a provision in the covenants with respect to the, um, section ten with regard to lease rentals, that that can't be amended without Board action.
Right.
The concern that Alderman Vincent has is, is that the covenants otherwise may be amended by the developer, as long as the developer owns a lot, to whatever he wants to. And so, I know he's not going to, because we've gone through all this, and you're not gonna issue any permits for anything other than that.
Right.
But what I think is a, is an accommodation is, is you want to see in these covenants that particular things cannot be amended without Board approval. And it's my understanding, and it, I'm sure you don't care whether or not there's a basketball goal there, but you do care whether or not the house is eighteen hundred square feet, something like that, and some of the construction design, which is an easy tweak, 'cause that's what they're gonna do anyway. So, to raise your level of comfort, we can do that. I don't see that as an issue. We don't, we just want to say everything, because, gosh, you, you're not gonna care about garage sales. We have an ordinance on that, you know? But, so maybe we can ferret out those things that are very particular, that you're concerned about, that you don't want changed. You want them the way you want them, and then you don't want them changed without Board approval.
Well, and, and there is a subdivision that, not we as a city, but close by, that situation has happened, where the developer went and changed the covenants, filed a new set of covenants, changed the square footage, considerably lowered it.
And that's where, like what he said, as far as issuing building permits, we would hold, essentially hold on that end.
Well, I think it would be simple enough to say that section seven... Section seven would not be amended without Board approval? Or is there items within section seven?
Talking about seven point five? Floor area?
Well, seven point two, there's, there's a vinyl siding issue, right?
Right.
Seven point three is the sidewalks, which have to be determined, I don't know, four or five, I don't remember what the deal is. What, what is our...
We'd obviously prefer five.
What is our design, what is our, our development plan required?
I'll have to check that for TND, I don't have it off the top of my head. I really don't...
Well, it's not in TND, it's in the development ordinance. Matt, if you, do you know off the top of your head what it is?
I thought so. We'd prefer five, obviously.
I didn't bring my TND.
That would be on the builder, not the developer.
Seven point five, so, I mean, this is... You just tell me what, they can do it. I mean, it's not, you know, I wouldn't get into HOA responsibilities and the Architectural Review Committee makeup and modification of setbacks, it's not, you, you don't want to get into that, because we have an ordinance on setbacks anyway, so it doesn't matter. What the developer's saying, you know, you gotta follow the law in, in Rankin County or in, in the City of Brandon, they had to comply with ARC, we really don't want to get into that. I mean, that's kind of the, the developer doesn't want us, they don't want to get into it. They want to have the HOA set up and running and be out of that. So, I think you're, you don't want to mess with indemnities and things like that. Um, I think your focus would be on the seven areas right now.
But two point eight says you'll have the right to modify, amend, repeal, or change any, or any of the terms here at any time for any reason for eight years from the date of these covenants.
We're gonna override that with a provision that says, insofar as it pertains to this stuff...
Well, I, I want it in writing.
No, 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 I'm working through it. Yeah, I understand exactly what you want. You want something in writing that says, these covenants, whatever they say, regardless as to these things, they don't get amended without Board, Board approval. Approved, okay. What, the...
Up until the point that it's turned over to an HOA.
Well, no, you just say wherever, 'cause at some point they just moot out. Once the houses are built, once the sidewalks are built, they're not coming back and asking for that anyway. Okay? So, really, it's not that, but just know that your Article ten is already that way. Okay? So, what we need to do is look in, and what other particular, 'cause it's one paragraph. It says, "All this other stuff notwithstanding, this section, this section, this section, this section shall not be amended without Board approval." And Richard knows, I mean, Richard can have that amendment to us by, you know, whatever, and you can approve these, you can approve everything subject to the receipt of that, so it won't hold it up for tonight, if you want to do that, if you're ready to do that. If not, I understand.
As the developer, Kelly, um, is it your intention to sell any of these lots to other folks, I mean, to other builders? Are you gonna build them all, or where you, where you going with that?
As of right now, we're building every house that's in there. Uh, first off, thank y'all for coming tonight. Every day, when you're at this stage in it, I did my calculation, it's five hundred and eighty-two dollars a day in interest. So, thank y'all very much for coming tonight. As of right now, I, I have twenty-four house plans ready. We're planning to build every house in there. Uh, there's not that many lots out there, so we are gonna be the builder, and I'll try to clear up a couple of things. I think in our covenants, we, we require good neighbor fence. I'm the only builder, so it'll all be a good neighbor fence, the fences will match, unless we submit something different decorative, you know, in the common areas. I think I submitted the entrance feature, you know? But anyway, so, in any house, be a good neighbor fence, and that's what they all have to be. Uh, on the sidewalks, I mean, four feet is, I think, a typical sidewalk.
I think it'd be better to be five.
I don't have an issue with that, if y'all really want them to be five feet. I mean, that's, that's, you know, and not consequential, we can change that and have that in the amendment for tomorrow also. Uh, what's the next question?
You have forty-six lots, I think, is that right what I remember?
Yes, sir.
And range from, what, eighteen hundred to twenty-two hundred?
Well, in the second phase is the twenty-two hundred minimums on the larger lots, but, uh, this phase is primarily eighteen hundred and two thousand.
And what's, what's the price range, or do you have an idea what these prices?
Yeah, we've actually got some appraisals out already, and, uh, two hundred and five dollars a foot. So, the, these houses will be four hundred to five hundred thousand. I mean, I guess you could have one at three hundred and ninety thousand, but it'll be, uh, I think most of our plans are coming in at nineteen hundred to twenty-one hundred feet in the eighteen hundred minimum. So, you're right at four hundred thousand on the smaller houses.
So, you know, I brought up the vinyl siding.
Uh, we can take vinyl siding now.
I mean, carpet and fascia, or whatever you do there, I mean, I know a lot of them do it there, but...
Yeah, I'm good with the vinyl siding. We don't use vinyl siding, so I'm good with that.
Where is that, Chris? Um, okay, seven, two?
Seven, two.
Okay. Well, we gotta fix that, and it can't be changed.
And then on accessory buildings, I mean, I, you know, I, I just don't want somebody having one of these rent-owns down here on the highway.
We put them there.
Hauled in or something.
The rental issue's taken here.
No, they, they, outbuilding, like a...
Accessory building.
Yeah, like a outparcelled building. We typically, it should be in there, they, it has to be built to the standards of the house, if they do an outbuilding.
Match the exterior of the house? Is that what?
Mm-hmm.
Where are you at?
I don't really see anybody putting one on, on these lots.
You know, accessory building of any kind will be permitted on any lot without prior approval. So, we're just gonna say, you can't let somebody do such a accessory.
Yeah, no, I, I just don't want some, you know...
I want it to match the, uh...
Sears, Robo, metal building.
He didn't want it delivered on a roll-off.
It's easy, no, Kelly's got it. We're just gonna, you're gonna put, no, you're gonna put, to meet what he's saying, what he's saying, we're just gonna add a sentence that says the accessory building has to be approved by the HOA, but it has to meet, have the same veneers as the main building.
Yes.
Same, same pitch, veneer, whatever. You know what I'm talking about. The general characteristics of the main building.
Of the main residence, yes.
Unless approved otherwise. I mean, you may have a main building that is hardy board, and you come in with a, an accessory building that's got stone and, you know, something else.
That's acceptable.
Yeah.
It'll come through.
You know, so...
Um, on the, the rental part of it, I know we've got the part about the, the builder and the, the thirty-six month lease, whatever, covered lease or whatever it's called, but there was another part in there that said twenty-five percent of the homes in there could be rental.
That's what you approved in your temporary moratorium. I mean, that's, that's, that's what y'all approved.
I think it says no more than twenty-five percent.
No more than twenty-five percent in any one phase.
And it said has to be, no more than twenty-five percent.
That's the language in the temporary moratorium now. It's exact, I mean, that's, that's what we, that's what...
That's high.
Well, your focus...
When are we gonna approve something permanent on that?
You're, you're having some information on build-to-rent, but you're still gonna have to deal with regular subdivisions. I mean, there's still...
Oh, I know, I know.
There's still a level of rental that's going to occur in, in some of them.
I'm not saying no, but I'm just saying, one-fourth of the subdivisions of each phase? And still allowing, whatever they call that, like if the builder, if you couldn't sell a house...
Well, this is clearly designed not to be build-to-rent in any regard, because everything has to be a year, you have, even the leases that you can have are long-term leases.
At least a year.
Limited to that. You cannot do like the, um, Airbnbs and whatnot, that's, that's out. Um, association has to approve the lease. You've got your residential home builders and your lease purchase exemption. So, this, I don't know, I mean, this is the language that we have approved on other subdivisions that have come through since the temporary moratorium has been in place. It's just, it's the language. Um, but this is the language we hammered out with the home builders that we thought kind of would address the issue, 'cause you can't, I'm understanding that from a financial standpoint, you can't get a build-to-rent at, at twenty-five percent. They just can't do it that way from the standpoint of setting up management and all that other stuff. Could be wrong, but I'm not into that.
I've probably built five hundred houses, seven hundred in my career. I think somebody bought two of them for a rental. I mean, I understand y'all's overall rental thought process and what's going on, but that's not typically what happens in our subdivisions, and I don't see that happening here. I realize you're working on something bigger than that, but we typically don't sell, we do build, we think a nicer house, we, we've made it the past twenty years, so I'm just trying to help it out in this situation. But we did reach out to get the exact language that was in y'all's order next.
Okay. It's five twenty-six. Anything else, Kelly?
Can I run through the highlights, just so I know?
Real quick, Mark.
Okay. So, I'm gonna start at sevens, 'cause it looks like sevens is where we were. On seven point two, we want that changed to provide that the use of vinyl siding is not approved except for carpet and fascia, right? No vinyl except for carpet and fascia, we agree on that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, sidewalks are five feet, we agree on that? The accessory buildings have to, regardless of, I mean, ARC has to approve it, but it has to be consistent with the main building on the lot, from the standpoint of veneers, whatever, what, I mean...
Stacks and material.
Is that a good phrase for you? Chris, aesthetics and material?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And then I think that we just need to put in here that this, these provisions in seven, the seven provisions, it's easy enough just to put the sevens don't change without Board approval. In other words, have the, have the, you know, ultimately, these have to be approved by, by the Board, okay? The provisions of the covenants notwithstanding, the amendments to the sevens have to be approved by the Board. How about that? Although so much of this is gonna be covered by ordinance anyway, we don't care. Off-street parking, stuff like that. Um, and then at some point, you know, the PRV used to have that in all their covenants... Although, so much of this is going to be covered by ordinance anyway, we don't care. Off-street parking, stuff like that. And then, at some point, you know, the PRV used to have that in all their covenants, everyone on it, and at some point, they just said, we're done. And they filed something of record for this particular one and said, we're out, thank you, you don't need to come back to us anymore. Generally, that happens once everything's built out, there's really no movement, things like that. And so, since you're building them all, it should work. With that, would y'all be inclined to approve the covenant subject to receipt of, as amended and receipt by us, and approve and move forward? Okay.
So, is this not part of the approval process?
Well, that's what got you here today.
I know.
I don't, I don't, I don't know what that is. I don't know what that is.
This was the application, the original application, where it shows all the architectural design and everything that they want to do. It's never been necessarily a part of the covenants or the formal approval process.
All right, I don't know, is there anything in that, if we were to say, because I don't know, I've not seen it, but I understand what he's saying, because we receive those, is there anything in that that we say, and the development shall occur consistent with that document?
That document's consistent with the ordinance.
Okay. So, we're going to approve it, and the approval, well, you may, if your motion-
In their right hand.
I would suggest that you just include in your motion that the development shall be consistent with our ordinances and-
The development synopsis, which that is that?
Development synopsis. That'll be appended to the minutes. Okay, well, that's, and that's good enough, because when they come in with a permit, we'll go, if it gets issued and it's inconsistent with that in our ordinance, it's on us. Because we can stop it and go no. So, if it happened, it's not Kelly's fault, it's our fault, because it's in here. Okay?
That would have been a part of the minutes for April 4, 2022, that's when that was approved originally.
Development synopsis? Okay. Does that satisfy everyone?
A copy of synopsis?
I'll send it to you today.
Or leave you a hard copy in the mailbox.
That was back in the days when we got the agenda packet with that dick.
Huh? Sorry? Leave a hard copy in the mailbox?
I had to dig through the file cabinet there.
Mr. Mayor, when we, you're getting ready to open the board meeting anyway, so we're ready, it's okay.
Well, I'll open the board meeting, we continue this conversation when we get to it on the agenda. I got a couple more comments to make regarding to that. All right. So, we'll close the work session, it is 5:30, don't want to keep you any later than necessary, but we'll open the board meeting, we've already prayed, and board, as custom, we will do say the pledge of allegiance. If you would rise, turn to face the flag, salute and pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, board. All right, need a motion to append the work session and special board meeting notices to the minutes?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Sharon Womack, second by Mr. Jared Crane, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign, and if you would note, Mr. Williams couldn't be here tonight, please keep him in your prayers and thoughts. Item two, this is something that was missed on the agenda money that we need to take care of. Matthew called it, and Carly called it, and it was just, again, we're all busy, working as fast as we can, but we did overlook a payout on the street resurfacing plan that we've begun. Need a motion to approve that, we'll just take some of these singularly. So, is there a motion to approve the payout number two, Mark?
Yeah, I didn't know if we were going to take them all together or not, Mayor.
No, well, we may group a couple of them, but that one, let's just go ahead and get it out of the way. Is there a motion to take, to pay, motion by Mr. Jared Crane? Second, second by Mr. David Ferris. Any questions? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Thank you. So, let's just take a moment here on number three, and make sure we've ended that conversation. We had a work session and discussion of the final plat and covenants of Collier Crossing. I'd like to just follow up with a couple of, anything that, number one, does the board, or Mr. Baker, y'all have anything else to say on that subject after coming out of the work session? Okay, go ahead, you go first. Okay, great, thank you. Behalf of the board, and behalf of anybody else in the world that's listening, and to department heads, and Kelly, I know it's been somewhat frustrating for everybody, but I want to tell you on behalf of the city, we're not, we're not immune from this, but board members change, mayors change, department heads change, developers change, and unfortunately, we've been in a few situations that, that some of us that have been here for a long time are very familiar with, where somebody comes along, begins to take advantage of a situation, as has been described in this room. And there have been situations where all of a sudden, a developer comes along and sells five, or six, or eight, or 10 lots, and then the builder comes along and says, well, I didn't agree to that, and it places the, the city who's responsible for the citizens and everybody, and to protect those that come behind us that are buying those houses. So, we get caught in a trap between a subdivision where a builder, a developer says they're going to do this, and they don't, they put it off on a builder, then we get caught in this trap, and, you know, it gets very controversial when a builder says, well, I didn't agree to that, and all of a sudden, two years later, we're trying to work out fences about, deals about fences that we shouldn't be having long, complicated meetings about. Now, you might say that's a poor developer, you might say it's a poor builder, but these are the things that have led to the contention among the board that you're facing with. Now, I know you're not going to be that way, nobody's going to sit there and say, I'm going to be that way, but these people are caught in more traps, and you can shake your stick at it, and they have to answer to the people that they represent. And so, we're just trying to create a little tighter system and make sure that everybody's clear in understanding, and as Mark Baker leads us to, render it to the minutes, so that two years from now, you can go back and say, no, this is what was said, and this is how we're going to handle it. I'm sure it happens everywhere, but we're trying to get better at doing business, so, you know, somewhat apologizing for any inconvenience that you've had and any money lost, but same time, we've got a duty that we're responsible for, and that's what's led us to the part of this discussion that we're having. And I appreciate the board, I appreciate you leading us here, and we're just going to get better as we go forward, okay? Bigger, better, stronger, better brand is what we all want. All right, so if there aren't any additions to that, is there a motion to approve the final plat and covenants of Collier Crossing Phase One? Motion by Mr. Sharon Womack? Second, who said that?
I am.
Mr. Chris Vincent? Any further discussion on that? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Thank you all for your comments and thoughts. All right, I did not get number five, so board, I'm going to combine four, six, and seven. We just got to keep putting those people off in Stony Brook, and hopefully, by the next board meeting, I'll have something I can share with you. Well, well, come up here and microphone, and we're going to take these, we'll continue taking them one at a time, then, we'll take four right now. Number four, consideration to approve participation in Live Nation's National Concert Week beginning May 7 through May 14. We did this last year, board, they pick out a number of concerts, and they do a $25 ticket all-in, kind of a summer promotion. It's, they hit, you get over 300 million views on that, so it puts us in line with every other venue across the country that's participating in that. Bodes well for us, so this is nothing new, we did the same thing last year, but I'd like you to vote on that, make sure we put it in the minutes. Is there a motion to approve the request by Live Nation to participate in that $25 deal that they do?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Sharon Womack, second by Mr. Jared Crane. Any discussion on that? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Board, they picked four of our summer concert season at amphitheater, and two here at City Hall, like Blimpy, Blimpy's one of those, so anyway. All right, number five, we won't remove, we'll let the city engineer talk about this right quick. Matthew has been kind enough to put up with me in designing a bridge at Stony Brook that we might be able to replace. The big question I have is the, an estimated cost of that, and whether we can self-perform or whether we need to bid this out. That's the big question for me and you. Kelly, I don't have to stick around unless you just want to for a while? Okay. We work every day to try to do business better, so I want you to understand that. I know you're going to build a wonderful product, and I hope it's not the last product you're going to build. Go ahead, Matthew, floor is yours.
I would like to apologize if I was supposed to have these in your hands earlier, hot off the press. Each one of you, I've given you two different packets, this is the bridge behind Stony Brook, between Stony Brook and Shallow Park. Everybody familiar with where I'm talking about? One, if you would, look at the color rendering. This is a, just a schematic that we did internally as we were planning the design of this over the last couple of weeks, with a picture, just to kind of give you an idea of what the actual design drawing shows. So, the two that are stapled together is our actual drawings. Felt like if I presented that, I'm not trying to offend anyone, but it gets pretty detailed. I wanted to kind of give you a conceptual here, like I said, this is very rough, this is just what we had in the office, but kind of shows you what this is representative of. The plan to be, to do this would be to leave the two pilings in place, utilize them. You can, you can see the red lines on there would be the proposed bridge. The power pole there does kind of present a little bit of an obstacle we got to work around, but on the north side, we're going to make that ADA compliant with a wooden ramp that comes down and then ties into a concrete pad, and then from there, we can, you know, eventually tie it into the trail system, you know, that's for another topic, another day, but get it down at an ADA compliant ramp to the north side, on the side that the ball fields are on. The mayor specifically asked for a cost estimate, water, sewer, streets, all that's what I do. Me and our structural guy in house, we're buildings, so I reached out to a contractor today and got a price, he was kind enough to spend some time, looked at it, he said he'd budget 50,000. It was actually at 48, is what his number was, I'm just telling you. If you bid the thing out, it's what you'd be looking like.
Is this entirely a wooden structure all the way across, no cement?
Well, we got a concrete pad on one end.
Well, other than that, that's on the ground.
It's a treated wooden structure with galvanized connectors, yeah, it's another wooden structure like what's there, similar to what's there.
Okay, in your drawing here, does it break out the materials to be used by size and timber and all that kind of stuff?
It does not, but we could get one, I could get you a breakdown, but it's not something we would typically do on a job like this. This would be a lump sum for the, from the wood aspect.
So, let me, I'll come back at you, I want you to have this, know we were working on it. We've been talking, I've been talking to the residents in there, I'll get with them. I'll come back at you at our next board meeting, Matthew and I will sit down and go over a few more details of construction, and see if we can self-perform this, and how long it might take us to build it, and we'll go from there. Key thing is, if we're going over the bridge, it needs to be ADA compliant coming out of a neighborhood, yes, sir?
You can go ahead and get the board to give you the approval to advertise it, if you and Matthew scratch your head and realize you can't do it self, that way you haven't lost your time for publication, and the board's not compelled to do anything until they get bids in and see.
Well, I can tell you, we're busy, we've got, we are very busy.
I'm just saying it can save you some time.
It would be a lot easier on us to bid it out, I can just tell you, time-wise, go ahead and get cost to bid it, we'd probably get it in the ground quicker than we can self-perform. So, if you want to move on it, we'll do that. So, y'all want to talk about this for just a second?
Do we know for sure that?
That's our property.
That is on top of a sewer easement that runs through that gap where the fences are. So, there's a sewer line underneath there, you can kind of see it a little bit in the shadows there, it's just to the left of the bridge. And there's also storm drains that empty into the ditch right there as well, out of the subdivision. That's presented somewhat of a wash problem on the homeowner's side that would correct whenever any construction's going on in there, so it'll take a little bit of rip raft and little massage there, but it'll get straightened up. Okay, so, with the motion, we will move forward with advertising for bids and come back at you with those bids. You'll still, you can still say no if it comes in crazy, but we'll try to get two or three or four bids.
And if we think it's going to be under 75,000, we don't have to advertise for bid, we can reach out for quotes, so.
Okay, so, we'll, as quickly as we can, come back with quotes or something, and for you to consider, and we'll move on from there. All right? Thank you, Matthew, appreciate you bringing those this evening. Pardon?
No vote.
No vote.
We didn't vote, that's what, yeah.
All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign, thank you, board. We'll combine six and seven into a single vote, consideration to approve the lowest and best quote received from Puckett Power Systems for the replacement of a water pump, block heater, and hoses at the Marquette well in the amount of $5,796.30. Number seven, consideration to approve professional services agreement with Deep South Land Improvements LLC for mowing and cutting of right-of-ways unauthorized, mayor to execute same. It's taking us longer to get the envisioned areas together that Carly and Jody and I work on, so this would be for six months, and we'll just continue with David Querin as we have in the past, Deep South, and that way, we can stay ahead of mowing until we can get, and I also want to tell you, board, I'm going to get quotes, and we'll move forward with cleaning up downtown and out at amphitheater and a few other places, go ahead and take care of that. Lump sum, one-time Charlie, and as we move toward a better system of taking care, where we look.
So, what we're approving tonight, is this for citywide right-of-way cut?
Same cutting they've been doing, and if there's some additions, we need to know that, just tell me, and I'll work them in, I'll figure out how to get them.
Okay.
Okay? All right? So, is there a motion to approve six and seven this evening, so we can continue on with the work we're doing?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Jared Crane? Who said second? Second by Mr. Chris Vincent? Any questions? All in favor, say aye. Thank you, board, very much. Motion to adjourn? Motion by Mr. Sharon Womack?
Second.
Second by Mr. Jared Crane, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign, thank you, board. Board, it's good indication-